All right, let's call the meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as a law.
All right, Linda, if you could do the roll call for us?
Keef offer.
Here.
Spruul.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Ee Haven. Randall.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Medina.
All right, and the mayor and Mayor Proton both have been excused for this evening's meeting. Can we get an approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that council approve the agenda for February 25th, 2025.
Second.
And that was Councilmember Lewis, and second was from Dobree. Thank you. I just didn't hear the second. Thank you. Lewis?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keef offer.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The listing under consent agenda is a group of items that can be acted upon with a single motion and vote. The agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at that time. Prior to council's vote, the mayor will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Is there anything that anyone would like to see removed? Okay, so tonight we have the approval of council work session, special meeting, and agenda minutes for February 11th, 2025, an approval of the expenditure list for February 25, 2025, an approval of a renewal application on a hotel restaurant liquor license for Agave Azul Taqueria and Bar LLC DBA, a Cafe Azul Taqueria and Bar located at 44 West Main Street in Cortez, and D, the approval of a special event permit for the Cortez area Chamber of Commerce to host a business after-hours event on March 20th, 2025 from 4:00 to 7:00 PM on the premises of the Cortez area Chamber of Commerce located at 20 West Main Street, Cortez.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dobree and Lewis seconded.
Spruul?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef offer.
Aye.
All right, we are next at public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comments will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. So it looks like we have one public comment today. That's from Susan Chemnitz and from... Okay, Susan, welcome.
Sorry. You can't read it. Good evening, Susan Chemnitz, 511 South Cedar Street. And I just wanted to make a comment about something I heard in one of the work sessions when councilmember Spruul brought up that city council members might need a raise. And the reasons for that, I thought, were really great, but I have a different suggestion that you might consider to work up a per diem policy, and that would enable you to get paid for any hotel or any kind of travel expenses that you incur. And it's more transparent. Maybe the public won't think, oh, they're getting raises and I'm not. So just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and for presentations this evening, we have a 2024 draft December financial statement presented by Kelly Kosky.
Good evening, Chairman and Council. In your packets this evening are the December 24 draft financial statements. I call them our draft financial statements because they don't include all of the year-end accruals that we are required to do. We do accruals for payroll, benefits, accounts receivable, and accounts payable. And those are really just a process that we go through so that each one of those items are true with information that only goes through 1231. For example, normally we'll have a payroll in January, and that first payroll will include some of the dates from December. And so in order to get only December numbers in there, there is an adjustment that we need to do in order to make that happen. Typically, by now, we have those finished and complete for you, but we've really just had some scheduling issues. We've had timing issues of the council meetings, and over the last month, we've had three different staff members that were out sick for a week each at three different times. And in a really small staff like we have, that actually has kind of a ripple effect for us. So we're working as hard as we can to get those as quickly to you as possible, and we'll have more to come later. On a separate note, though, I do have some news from GFOA, which I did not include in the packet. You'll remember that back in June, we applied for the GFOA Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting. It's a award that the City of Cortez has never applied for before. And it is separate from... They have a budget award that's separate from that, but the budget award actually has very less stringent requirements for it, and so we felt that it was important to move forward with our application for the financial statements. Those are based off of the finalized audit numbers that we have along with 12 other statistical sections that are required for the GFOA award. We did not get the award this year, which was disappointing, but in the scoring process, we scored proficient in 86 of the 88 items that we are scored on. They had comments with some very minor issues. For example, in the auditor's letter, they wanted them to refer to it as an unmodified opinion versus an unqualified opinion. And they also would like to see the auditor's letter placed in the packet ahead of the management discussion and analysis. So I think for our first time out, that was an excellent try. Our auditor feels like minor adjustments will be needed, and we'll be applying again in June. I think we've got a much better picture of what it is that they're looking for, and just I knew exactly how detailed that was going to be. So really great job for the whole finance team and for our audit team for such a great representation for our first time out. I also had applied for the GFOA Leadership Academy. Leadership Academy is going to be held at the end of March. There are only 50 participants that are selected across the United States, Canada, and the U.S. Virgin Islands, and I'm happy to announce that I was selected as a participant for this year. So I will be out of the office at the end of March, attending the GFOA Leadership Academy. Thank you.
Could I ask you what that acronym stands for, GFOA?
It stands for the Government Finance Officers Association.
Congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for Kelly at this time?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have number five, public hearings. We have a second reading and public hearing on ordinance number 1332, series 2025. It's an ordinance approving a temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for licenses or permits for natural medicine, healing centers, cultivation facilities, product manufacturing, testing facilities, and any other related license or permit involving natural medicine to allow the city to draft to consider adopting local regulations concerning the same. And our presenter this evening is our city attorney, Patrick Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I spoke a little bit about this on first reading tonight, obviously is second reading and the public hearing. The state passed the law that authorizes natural medicine to be legalized statewide. It provides a limited amount of authority for local governments to also regulate in this area. It's basically time, place, and manner regulation. And I believe it was Councilmember Keef offer that asked the question at the last meeting about whether or not there are distance limitations for the natural medicine facilities similar to what is involved with the marijuana facilities. And I incorrectly stated that there were not. There actually are, and they're very similar. The state has a 1,000-foot limitation. And so the way the process works is the state issues a license first, and that license has to comply with all the state requirements. And if the local government has adopted by ordinance for cities or resolution for counties its own regulatory scheme, they have the ability to, through zoning or by varying the distance limitations, they can't so they can't license something that wasn't able to be licensed by the state. So 1,000 feet, and it's applies to... There's a list of schools, daycare centers, other facilities that are in the same business, elementary, middle, junior high, or high school, residential childcare facilities, preschools. So there is a distance limitation, and the city, as we did with marijuana, we went from 1,000 under the state regulation to 1,500 feet. And the city would have that ability to increase, not decrease, but increase. But that's obviously if the city decides it wants to enact its own regulations in this regard. And a side thing, if you have zoning that prohibits the retail sales of marijuana or natural medicine, then that zoning applies, and they can't locate there as well. But getting back to the ordinance that's before you, I think it probably warrants some additional staff review and consideration, and perhaps council work session input if the council decides it wants us to create local regulations. And in order to do that and avoid having people who may be interested in establishing natural medicine facilities, kind of trying to sneak in under the wire, that's what the purpose of a moratorium is. It prohibits them from applying or the city from considering their application until and unless the council adopts its own regulations. If you choose ultimately not to adopt local regulations, then the moratorium would expire, and people could get their licenses through the state and then locate wherever local zoning would allow. If you choose to adopt regulations, then we would have six months to work through that process and come up with appropriate regulations. Moratoriums can be extended. It's not uncommon. But you need a pretty good reason as to why you haven't completed your regulation adoption process within the six months. And I'm not sure if you wait till five and a half months before, you might... Somebody might challenge you on that. So I would certainly suggest that if council wants to adopt this ordinance with the moratorium, that it also instruct staff to begin preparing possible regulations. And that's all I have. I guess I don't know if there's any public here to provide input, but it is a public hearing now.
Does anybody on city council have any questions for Mr. Coleman before we do open it to a public hearing? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anyone from the general public, either for or against, who would like to come to the podium and make a statement? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move that council approve on second reading ordinance number 1332, series 2025, an ordinance approving a temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance, processing, and approval of application for licenses and permits for natural medicine, healing centers, cultivation facilities, product manufacturing, testing facilities, and any other related license or permit involving natural medicine to allow the city to draft and consider adopting local regulations concerning the same.
Second.
Okay, we had Lewis make the motion and Randall second.
Dobree?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keef offer.
Aye.
All right, we have number six, no unfinished business. We're going to move to number seven, new business. We'll start with a police department vehicle lease. This would authorize the city manager to sign a five-year lease agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC for the purchase of four 2025 Chevy Tahos, two 2025 Chevy 1500s from John Elway Chevrolet, and have those six vehicles outfitted with the emergency equipment by MHQ of New Mexico. And we have Andy Brock presenting.
Good afternoon. In 2022, the Cortez Police Department or the city council approved a four-year lease for six Chevy Tahos, effectively starting the lease program. The police department is now requesting that the council approve the lease of six additional vehicles for the third year of the program. The goal of leasing the vehicles for the police department is to update our older fleet as we were only able to purchase one vehicle in a three-year time span. Older vehicles with higher mileage require more maintenance, are less reliable in emergency situations, and the older vehicles we rotate out with life left in them could be utilized elsewhere in the city for some years, just not in emergency capacity. The lease program would allow the city to lease six new police vehicles for a term of five years. At the end of the five-year period, the city of Cortez has the option to purchase the leased vehicles for $1 or sell them back to the leasing company for fair market value. The option to purchase these vehicles for $1 would allow the city to purchase the vehicles and repurpose them in the areas and other areas of the city. Currently, the police department vehicles that are five to six years old have between 30,000 and 50,000 miles on them. It is believed that vehicles repurposed within the city would have significant usable life left in them for other departments. In 2024, we decommissioned five vehicles, police vehicles, with an average of 95,000 miles on them. The police department currently has four vehicles with over 90,000 miles on them. So for 2025, the police department is requesting the city lease six police vehicles, four Chevy Tahos, and two Chevy 1500 Silverado patrol vehicles. They're all police pursuit vehicle rated. As mentioned, the city can sell the vehicles back to the leasing company, retain the vehicle for city use, or sell the vehicles to another entity, and there are no mileage restrictions on that. For the physical impact, Kelly Kosky is going to take over.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, so the financial impact that we have for this, we actually received for the outfit, three different bids. One from MHQ in Albuquerque, one that was from Watts Equipment in Peyton, Arizona, and another one that was from 3E out of Aztec. Of the outfit cost, MHQ out of Albuquerque had the lowest cost for the outfit for the vehicles. Vehicles will be purchased through John Elway Chevrolet. They are the state bid provider for all police and emergency vehicles, so they have a guaranteed lowest price on each one of the vehicles that we'll be leasing. And then for our leasing options, we had three people that responded. One of them was Leasing Specialist, the other was Clayton Holdings, and Kansas State Bank. Clayton Holdings came in not only with the lowest interest rate, the lowest annual payments, and the total package that we will be financing is $462,000.193.11. We have worked with Clayton Holdings in the past. I've found them to be very efficient, very thorough, and very timely in their communications with us. My finance department would have no problem working with them again. And all of these funds have been budgeted in the Police Administration Department and the General Fund of the 2025 Budget. A possible motion would be, if agreed upon by the city council, I move that council authorize city manager Drew Sanders to sign a five-year lease purchase agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC for a lease purchase of four 2025 Chevy Tahos and two 2025 Chevy 1500s from John Elway Chevrolet, and have those six vehicles, excuse me, outfitted with emergency equipment by MHQ of New Mexico. Just as a side note, we've also worked with MHQ out of New Mexico in the past for their upfitting, and they seem to do a really stellar job when they're done with those. They just really look above and beyond what you would be expecting for a patrol car. Does anybody have additional questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Do we know what the timeline would be like for when we would be able to take possession of the fully outfitted vehicles?
So I think the timeline on the actual vehicles themselves, we've heard that it could be as early as the end of March and possibly by the 1st of May, which is a greatly accelerated schedule than what we've been dealing with before with the supply chain. And I'm going to ask for Andy, do you know about the outfit cost?
The outfit time? They were able to put out a vehicle. You're looking at a few months.
So would the leasing payments begin when we take full possession of the vehicles? Yes, okay. And then the one other question I had is the MHQ quotes both had sales tax still in them. Will we be able to get that waived?
And we talked to them about that, and in New Mexico, they're required to tax labor. And so if the work was done in Colorado, we would not receive that, but in New Mexico, you will.
So those are... Thank you.
Those are correct numbers.
Does your outfit include new cameras for the vehicles or using the old ones, or are we getting brand-new ones?
We're not doing cameras inside the vehicles. Everything's with the Axon body cams.
All right, are there any further questions for either Andy or Kelly? We have a motion?
I move that council authorize city manager Drew Sanders to sign a five-year lease agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC for a lease purchase of four 2025 Chevy Tahos and two 2025 Chevy 1500s from John Elway Chevrolet, and have those six vehicles outfitted with emergency equipment by MHQ of New Mexico.
Second.
All right, Spruul made the motion and Dobree seconded.
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keef offer.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have bid results for the 2025 Cathodic Protection Project, tanks one, two, and three. And I'm going to refer to the city manager for this one.
Yeah, good evening, council. We have received some information just yesterday that has pointed out to us that this is not ready to come before council yet. I am requesting that council table this until we can come in with the right information. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to table this?
I motion to table the issue until we have all of the information available to us.
Second.
Okay, we have Randall made the motion to table and Lewis to second.
Dobree?
Aye.
Randall? Lewis?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keef offer.
Aye.
All right, up next, we have ordinance number 1331, series 2025, and council will consider approving on first reading ordinance number 1331, series 2025, an ordinance repealing in its entirety the City of Cortez Land Use Code and adopting an updated City of Cortez Land Use Code. This will be presented by our Director of Community and Economic Development, Rachel Marchbanks.
Good evening, council. As you mentioned, this is the first reading of an ordinance to repeal the existing land use code and adopt a new proposed land use code. It's a complex set of regulations that the staff has worked on with the last two years with our consultant from Logan Simpson and also our contract city planner, Nancy Dozdal. We've also worked with a code committee and the general public to complete the revisions of the existing land use code. And it represents a lot of work, so we're really excited to bring this to you for our first reading. And yeah, at this point, we're hoping to hold the questions until the public hearing.
I had a question. It... Our city attorney made some recommendations for additions and amendments to it as it was first presented. Can you give us the status of those? Did those get incorporated, or what's the plan on those?
Sure, I'll address that. The recommendations that I included in my memo are not part of the current ordinance that's before you. And but they are now... They were published in the agenda packet for this meeting and will also be published prior to the public hearing. There was some concern by the Planning Commission that because the process had been so open and transparent with a lot of public involvement, that they preferred not to make a recommendation regarding the amendments that I had prepared that are included in my memo because those had not gone through the public review process at, you know, through the online portal that was set up for public comments or at any of the prior public outreach sessions. So I think what we would recommend is that we continue to include that memo with the agenda item, but that your vote tonight would be to, if you so choose, to forward this on, to vote on first reading the ordinance in its original form. this on, to vote on first reading the ordinance in its original form, and then the amendments that I'm recommending could be brought up at the public hearing, and you could receive additional staff input and additional public input, if any, prior to incorporating those, or not incorporating them into the ordinance that would finally be adopted. You do have the ability to amend the ordinance on second reading from what is put forward on first reading. Obviously, if it's a complete rewrite or something, I would recommend that you go back and start over with a new first reading, but in this instance, the proposals that I am making would not be appropriate for, or necessary for a complete redo of the first reading. So if that answers your question.
Are there any further questions? Have a motion?
I move that Council approve on first reading Ordinance Number 1331, Series 2025, an ordinance repealing in its entirety the City of Cortez Land Use Code and adopting an updated City of Cortez Land Use Code, and set for public hearing and second reading on March 11, 2025.
Second.
Okay, Dobree made the motion, and Spruill seconded the motion.
Spruill?
Yes.
Dobree?
Aye.
Randall? Lewis?
Aye.
Kefauver?
Aye.
All right, up next on D, we have Ordinance Number 1333, Series 2025, an ordinance authorizing and approving an assignment of an airport land lease and hangar development agreement at the Cortez Municipal Airport, and the Airport Director Jeremy Patton will be the presenter.
Good evening, City Council. So yeah, as we said, this is a request from a tenant. They're in a hangar agreement already, a land lease and hangar development agreement on Hangar North 3, North Number 3. Owners Lars Bjorkvist and John Patton III, no relation to me. But this agreement has been in place with the city since 2016. They bought a hangar from the city, and since then Lars is ending his flying and has sold his half of the share of the hangar, 50% share between him and John Patton. Paul Berry is assuming 50% ownership of said hangar, so this is just primarily a request for the transfer. This hangar itself also needs an ordinance that had not been previously taken care of. So this is a first reading requesting an ordinance and the transfer of ownership of this hangar. There's no fiscal impact. We've already invoiced the yearly revenue, or lease agreement amount for the year, so staff is recommending that Council approve on first reading Ordinance 1333, Series 2025, authorizing and approving an assignment of an airport land lease and hangar development agreement at the airport. With that, the motion, I move a Council approve on first reading Ordinance 1333, Series 2025, an ordinance authorizing and approving the assignment of an airport land lease and hangar development agreement at Cortez Municipal Airport, and set for second reading and public hearing March 11, 2025. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Council approve on first reading Ordinance Number 1333, Series 2025, an ordinance authorizing and approving an assignment of an airport land lease and hangar development agreement at the Cortez Municipal Airport, and set for public hearing and second reading on March 11, 2025.
Second. All right, we had Lewis make the motion, and Dobree second the motion.
Spruill?
Yes.
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Kefauver?
Aye.
All right, up next, number eight, we have no draft resolutions or ordinances. Number nine, the City Attorney report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. City Managers report?
Yes, Council, I do have a report for you this evening. First of all, I'd like to report that City Attorney Pat Coleman. CML Legislative Workshop in Denver this past week. The information and an early outlook was provided pertaining to federal grants. This was pretty impactful for us regarding two federal grants that we have that are in jeopardy at the moment, and we're not sure how to proceed, but we are gathering information and trying to obtain an outlook that is going to help us proceed before we make big expenditures that we can't get reimbursed for. Secondly, the Cortez Golf Course is slated to open officially on March 1, 2025. This will be weather-dependent as we move forward. Also, the driving range actually opened this past Saturday, so good news for golfers. Next, bad news for pool attendees who attend on Saturdays. We received information from Parks and Recreation that starting March 8, the Recreation Center Pool will be closed due to unavailability of nine out of the 10 lifeguards, all of whom participate in spring sports. The Aquatics Department is in the process of training potential lifeguards, but we can't make promises at this point whether they'll be ready to actually help out during that time. Also, General Services Director Casey Simpson and I met with Casey Irving from Clear Networks about their build-out of our fiber system in our city. So if you don't know, they are just about a year behind schedule, but that's, and they gave reasons for that. A lot of it is that you took two systems and tried to merge them, and it became extremely complicated. However, the build-out has continued, and they are nearing completion. They are tentatively expecting that to be done by July 1. Also, they pointed out that you can, anybody can go on and look at the update of their construction by going to Clear Networks, that's C-L-E-A-R-N-E-T-W-O-R-X.com/Cortez, and there's actually a map right on that first page there, and you can look at your address and see where they are in the process. But they're getting pretty close to nearing completion. Also, I wanted to report to Council that our staff liaisons for our boards and commissions received train, the trainer, training this week, and received our Boards and Commissions Manual and Guide, and I believe that was shared with Council as well. And we'll be rolling that out and getting all of our boards and commissions on the same page, and following city charter and our code and ordinances and state statutes regarding open meetings laws, et cetera. We're excited about that. That's a little bit long overdue, but we're on track now. So that concludes my report, pending any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have City Council Committee reports. During the workshop today, the City Attorney Patrick Coleman gave a presentation on procedures for amending the Cortez City Charter, so, and we were really lucky to get a two-for-one. Linda Smith gave us a timeline and some of the associated costs, so we got a lot of really great information moving forward, and kind of all the different options for that. And I guess we'll start with Dennis. Do we have any reports, board reports?
The next Mesa Verde Country Board Meeting is March 31st.
The Golf Advisory Committee met on Friday, February 21st. We talked about last year, our cost recovery exceeded 100%. I think we were about 114% to be a little closer. We had 23,946 reported rounds of golf last year, which is pretty incredible for the size of our golf course. We talked about positives from last year. The course condition was something that really stood out. The marketing efforts that have been made down in the Phoenix area have paid off. Some of the obstacles would be our sprinkler system is pretty antiquated, and opportunities that exist are more marketing opportunities, and looking at making some stay-and-play package deals. And our City Manager mentioned that the driving range opened, and the tarps will come off the greens on Thursday, and they're open to take tee times on Saturday, March 1.
Okay?
I was not at the Cortez Historic Preservation Board Meeting this last month, as I was out of town. The next meeting is scheduled for March 5.
Thank you so much. All right, under Other Items of Business, Council may adjourn to executive session for a conference with the City Attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding potential litigation involving a land use matter and regarding two personnel matters pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024B.
I move that Council adjourn to executive session for a conference with the City Attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding potential litigation involving a land use matter and regarding two personnel matters pursuant to section, pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024B.
Second.
Okay, Dobree made the motion, and Lewis seconded the motion.
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall? Spruill?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Dobree?
Aye.
Kefauver?
Aye.
All right, at this time, we'll move in. All right, at this time we'll move in.
All right, it is still February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. The time is nine oh three P M. The executive session has concluded and council is reconvened into open session. Those persons participating in the executive session were myself, Presiding Officer Matthew Kiefauer, council members Dennis Spruill, Bill Lewis, April Randall, and Robert Dobree. Also participating were the city manager Drew Sanders and city attorney Patrick Coleman. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation, or formal action occurred during the executive session. If any member of the council or a member of the public believes that the subject matter of the executive session was not statutorily authorized and that discussions that occurred in executive session strayed from the announced subject matter, please speak up now. Seeing none, we will now move on to the next agenda item. So the next item on the agenda is public participation. I don't see anybody here from the public. So the final item on our agenda is adjournment motion.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, Lewis made the motion and Dobree seconded.
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ruhl?
Yes.
Kiefauer. Sorry, I forgot to use this.